Is now open. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing. The subject of this hearing is a request for an appeal. The subject property is identified on the county assessor's map as lots 7515, 7524, 7525, 7533, 7537, 7538, 7541, 7543, and 7544 on map four north, one west, five B C. The applicant or appellant is Lennar Northwest LLC and the owner is 1771 Columbia Boulevard LLC. Because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, we will take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter? Hearing none. Does anyone from the audience object to the ability of a counselor to make a fair decision? Hearing none. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as followed: required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor, neutral testimony, those opposed, rebuttal by the applicant, final questions, close of the record, deliberations, and decision. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to city code and O R S 197.735. The following is a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. St. Helens Municipal Code 171080501A through E. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards this applicable substantive criteria as described or other criteria on the plan such as the comp plan, the land use regulation such as that found in the development code which the person believes applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue including constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or in writing, or failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the approval authority and opportunity to respond to this issue precludes appeal to Luba or the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue and precludes an action for damages in circuit court. All right. So I'm going to share my screen here and go through our staff report. So as I mentioned, let's see, you got to give me the ability to share screen, Matt.
Hang on one second.
So this is an appeal of nine variance requests. The planning commission reviewed this at their May meeting and denied all nine. And then Lennar, the applicant, appealed this decision to this body tonight.
Jenny, you should have sharing capabilities now.
Okay. So I'm going to leave this up for the most of, most of the staff report just for reference. This has been a moving staff report. The numbers have been changing slightly and I'll talk about those as we go through this. So bear with me. The numbers get a little complicated. So this property should look familiar to city council. This is the Emerald Meadows subdivision. And back in 2016, the city council might remember changing the zoning of this property from our seven zoning, 7,000 square foot minimum to our five. Now it's been subdivided and is currently under development. Some of the lots are owned by Richmond American and some of the lots are, they're in escrow to purchase by Lennar, which is the applicant tonight. So the specific request is nine variances for lot coverage standards. So in this zone, they're 35% maximum lot coverage and they're requesting variances to that that range from 1% to 7.5% in lot coverage. And the increase depends on the specific lot. The reason they're requesting these variances is because Lennar uses specific model types for their development of homes. And for single level homes, it's difficult to get their models to fit on this type of lot with that maximum lot coverage. And I'm sure in their testimony, they'll talk about, talk about that issue a little bit more. So also some history on this. Back in March of 2019, Richmond American, which on this map are identified as pink, applied for and received 12 lot coverage variances, very similar to the ones that Lennar is requesting in yellow on this map. Since then, Richmond American has submitted building permits or is in the process of developing five of those 12 that they received without utilizing variances. And this is important because the planning commission reviewed the 12 variances for lot coverage and said, yes, 12 is an appropriate amount of variances for a subdivision of 77 lots. We can approve this. Since then, they decided not to use five. And that was a decision they can make. Typically, the planning commission reviews variances for single lots and they're always utilized, but in this case Richmond chose not to utilize them. And so we'll come back to that a little bit later, but it's an important, important thing to note. Okay. Now, I also wanted to point out, why are we reviewing, you know, 12 variances, nine variances? So typically, a subdivision could have a variance applied to it at the time of subdivision application. So this issue could have been addressed with one subdivision variance before the lots were all carved up. But now after the fact, we're looking at this as an issue. And so that's, that's why there's, there's so many. Okay, so moving on. So for this appeal staff report, I'm going to focus on the, the basis for denial that the planning commission looked at. So there's five criteria for granting a variance. And the commission found that three of the criteria were met by Lennar's application. So I'm going to focus on the two that they decided were not met. And the first one is, is the major one. So criteria C for granting a variance talks about that the standards of the city code are being met to the greatest extent that is reasonably possible. So what does that mean? Well, for Richmond's approval, the commission felt that granting 12 variances was a reasonable, was still meeting the standards to the, the most reasonable extent possible. So that's one test. The commission said, well, 12 out of 77 lots, that's reasonable. So for, for this criteria, you know, adding Lennar's nine requests, the commission said that's too many lots. That's, that's just on an unreasonable test of this criteria. So this is the point where things start to get a little crazy because as of yesterday, we received a building permit from a different developer for one of the lots that variant, that is being requested for a variance and it's not Lennar. So I think for the purposes of this decision tonight, we should take that request out. So they're actually only requesting eight variances. And maybe Lennar during their, their testimony can confirm that yes, they're not wanting to pursue all nine tonight. So it's, it's this lot right here, lot 66. We received a building permit from Blackhawk Homes and it was a two-story, not utilizing a variance at all. So that's one little tweak to the staff report and the recommendation. So the main question tonight is removing that one, is 15 lots out of a 77 lot subdivision, that's approximately 19% of the entire subdivision, is that too many variances, too many lot coverage variances to grant for one subdivision? If the city council feels like that's a reasonable amount, then grant, grant Lennar all, all of these variances. If not, I've also proposed an alternative. Now, we come back to Richmond not utilizing all of their 12. So since they didn't use five variances, one alternative the council can consider tonight is granting Lennar those five. Because the commission decided that 12 variances is a reasonable amount, the council could honor that and say, yes, we agree, 12 variances is a reasonable amount. We'll let Lennar use the five that Richmond did not use. And for reference, that would be well under, let's see, that would be about 13% of the total lot. So that's kind of the main decision for council to think about tonight is what's the right amount to grant for, for the subdivision? And, and it would be my recommendation, so if, if council wants to go that route and just grant the five, it would be my recommendation to grant the five lowest lot coverage percentages. So there's a table in the staff report and the conditions that I can go to now and we can, we can look at that. But at this time, I think I want to kind of open it up for questions to make sure everyone's following the logic there. I think that would be helpful. Does any counselor have a question? Do they follow me?
Yeah, we follow you.
Okay, cool. All right, so I'll go to-
Jenny?
Yes?
On this, lots that were given a variance, not used it, assume they want to change part of their building, does that variance come into play there?
So, yeah, that's about timing. So right now, the lots that are not being utilized for variances that Richmond is currently developing, they chose a site plan that didn't utilize a lot coverage variance. So they don't get to go back after the fact and, and then add that. Variances are, are limited duration. So if they don't utilize them within a year, they're moot.
Does, okay, them being moot by law, does that extract from their total and go back into the, the big pile? Whereas the fact that it's been granted and not used basically says it's been granted?
I think I, I think I get what you're saying. I think staff feels comfortable saying that Richmond is not going to utilize those lot covers because they had an approved building permit and are under development with a, with a site plan that is not using the lot coverage variance. Does that answer your question?
Not really. Obviously, when I do design a large area, I have a vision of what everything is going to look like when I get done. And I'm going to build some of it now and some of it in five years or whatever. So my original vision said, we're going to use these areas and we're going to need a variance. The time, how long I go before I use it or not, oh, we didn't use it, we can do it over there. I don't believe the overall design of the community, that part of the community, it now fits. I really can't change my design or my overall impression of what this development should look like becomes realistic. I mean, I had a one-time shot at variance. I and the city agreed on it. Now, if I sell some of these to other people, oh, can they come back and say, well, you weren't part of the original thing we want to change? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Sure. I, I think it's important to realize variances run with the land and in this case are based on a very specific proposal for that lot. So for the ones that Richmond were granted, they can only use their model of home on that lot. And if they chose not to use that, they can't go back and say they're going to use it again.
Or they sold it to someone else, the variance doesn't go to another builder.
That's correct, yeah.
And you'll be around for our deliberation if we have-
Yes, yeah. So I, I just want to cover the conditions real quick. I wanted to make sure that the council kind of understood just the basic request tonight. Obviously, we're going to have applicant's testimony and you'll understand it more when they can talk about why they're requesting this. But for now, let's, let's go through the conditions briefly.
Okay.
Okay, so tonight, the council has three main options. One would be affirm the planning commission and deny all nine. That is not what staff is recommending tonight. The second one would be to reverse the planning commission and approve all nine with the conditions as listed here. So it's important, like I mentioned, to tie, to tie Lennar to the specific type of model homes. And so we want to actually include this table for each variance. So you can see the nine requests here. Lot 66, where my cursor is, this is the lot that we believe Lennar is not on the market to purchase anymore. And this is the variance that we would remove from their request if they confirm that in their testimony tonight. So this table would be adopted into the conditions as written if you want to approve all of them. Or-
Would be eight with the one missing.
That would be eight. That's what I'm getting to, too.
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly. So we would remove that 66. Yeah, thank you. And then-
Has, has that lot been sold or is there possibility that it will be leaving them? Is it definitely not on their list or is it, they don't think they're going to use it now?
Well, we, so where am I? We received a building permit from a different builder that is not them. So we're assuming that they purchased the lot from the property owner, which is not Lennar.
So I want to continue on with our options and we will get, I promise you guys, any question you have for her in our deliberation, you-
We need to hear the testimony.
I heard the public testimony for a bit.
So, so the third option would be to pick which of these variances you want to grant if you don't want to grant them all. And it would be my suggestion to select the lowest lot coverage request. So looking at the column here, picking the lowest if you, if you feel like you don't want to grant all of them. So that, that's really the basic of it. I think we should move on to testimony and then, and then we can circle back for questions.
Yes, do that.
All right, so-
People not in favor?
Let's have the applicant's testimony first.
Okay.
Yep. So who's representing the applicant tonight?
Hi, this is Kelly Hosseini and I'm with Miller Nash. My address is 111 Southwest Fifth Avenue.
Kelly, there's some feedback in the room? Do you have another?
Okay. It's, it's, it's gone now.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. So my address is 111 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 3400 in Portland, 97204. And I represent Lennar Northwest. And here with me is Michael Anders. He's Lennar's Director of Land Acquisition. I've got David Force, who is Lennar's Planning Manager, and Shelley Nelson, who is Lennar's Land Analyst. So thank you for this opportunity to come before you. We're here this evening asking, asking you to reconsider the planning commission's decision to deny lot coverage variance requests for, it is indeed now eight lots in the Emerald Meadows subdivision. We are withdrawing the request for variance for the one lot that has been sold to another builder. And that's lot 66. As we set forth in our June 8th letter to you, as well as in our application materials, Lennar is asking for variances that are very similar to variances that were requested by Richmond American last year. And those are variances that the planning commission granted to Richmond. Before we submitted our variance applications, we talked to staff about them and staff indicated that it could support the variances. Staff did in fact support the variances before the planning commission and provided a positive staff report to that effect. Unfortunately, the planning commission denied those variances. And as we stated in our June 8th letter, it wasn't at all clear why the variances were being denied until we, we received the decision. We believe that the requested variances are minimal, just as Richmond's were, and they provide a better, more diverse housing stock for St. Helens. And they provide a type of single-family dwelling that your citizens want. So we hope that you can support our requests. I'm going to have a little bit more to say, but first Mike Anders is going to talk to you for a few minutes about the background of this variance request.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Good evening. Okay, I think we are getting the, the feedback issue resolved here. Good evening, thanks for having us this evening. Wanted to clarify a couple of things that have come up in, in some of the comments from the public. First thing, when we enter into a, a contract to purchase property, we initially do some investigation, then we dive into the business points with the seller and we put the property in contract. So from that point, we have a due diligence period that we dive into all the details where we look into setbacks, we look into the CCNRs and building permits, everything that's required to build within that municipality and within that community. And it was during that time in our feasibility, after we were already in escrow, that we discovered the lot coverage ratio. Due, so we didn't, we were not aware of the lot coverage ratio issue that would affect ranch homes on the property until after we got into our feasibility. So I just wanted to set the record straight that we were, were not familiar with the situation and how it affected the ability to put our homes on the property prior to entering into escrow. And then second of all, just, you know, how do, how do we get to requesting variances? When we are entered due diligence, part of that due diligence is investigating the market, the competition, the resale, other new home builders, demographics, et cetera. And from our personal perspective, we feel that there's a need for some ranch homes in addition to two-story homes. So we looked at our M L S statistics, we drove neighborhoods, we looked at the housing needs analysis that the city has put together and, and what they're trying to strive for with housing needs and diversity. And we take all that information and we come up with a plan of action that we believe is going to be successful to sell homes. One of the things to note that is a little different in how Richmond American does their business versus how we do our business, because I know it was a sense, we sensed the frustration from the planning commission that they granted variances to Richmond and then did not use them. Key difference on our business plan is we build spec homes as opposed to finding the buyers and then building the homes. Meaning that when the homes that we're going to build, we have pre-plotted, we determine which home is going to go on which home site. And when we close and we submit for building permits, we are going to build those homes on a speculative basis, betting that we've made the right decisions and the buyers are going to buy them. So we're not closing on the property, waiting for a buyer to come along and, and then building the home. Hence, the reason why the variances are important is because the, the, giving the lot coverage ratio, the, the floor plans of a certain size and a certain dimension that we believe are best for the marketplace don't fit on the home sites. So I think that's, is it Kelly? I mean, before you speak here.
All right, okay, excellent, okay. Thanks, Mike. I know you all received the June 8th letter, but there are some points that I would like to highlight to you from that letter. First, I want to reiterate that the variances being requested are very small, but the benefits are substantial. As Mike stated, the St. Helens housing market needs this type of one-level, single-family housing. And providing this kind of housing is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and with its housing needs analysis. As we noted in our June 8th letter, the city's comprehensive plan encourages housing types that provide housing for people with special needs, like people with mobility issues. One-level homes provide that. As we also noted, the R5 lot sizes are smaller than a lot size that would normally accommodate a one-level house. But that doesn't mean that there shouldn't be any one-level houses on those lots. All things being equal, a one-level house with a small lot coverage variance on an R5 lot is going to be more affordable than a one-level house on a larger lot. And home affordability is always a concern in any housing market. According to your housing needs analysis, detached homes will account for almost 60% of the 20-year dwelling unit demand. Of that demand, 15% will be from middle-income families who will only be able to afford a smaller, single-family detached home. The one-level homes that we're proposing can help supply that need. With respect to the scale of the variance request, they range from less than 1% to 7% with an average of about 4%. This allows for a trade-off between building height and lot coverage. That 4% average is actually less than the 5% lot coverage variance that any single-family residential homeowner gets by right under your code. So once someone moves into a house, they can add up to 5% lot coverage without applying for any variance. They can build a shed, another small dwelling, or even expand the footprint of their house. So the city has already made a policy choice that a 5% or less increase in lot coverage is okay. This is really no different than what Lennar is asking to do. We're just asking for approval upfront. So when code provision 171080501C, which is one of the criteria the planning commission decision says that we didn't meet, requires that the requested variances maintain city standards to the greatest extent reasonably possible, our variance request do because the city has already made a policy choice that 5% or less is okay. Now, other than the difference in height, the one-level homes aren't going to look unusually different from the street because the slight increase in lot coverage will occur in the back of the house. What it will provide is a pleasant diversity and streetscape through the different heights and facades of the houses. Aside from all the benefits that the one-level houses provide, Lennar also believes that the variance requests meet all of the applicable approval criteria, just like they did for Richmond American. We have laid out in detail why we believe that of the two approval criteria at issue. And that, and that was in our June 8th letter and I'm not going to go through that in detail here. I will say however, that what we're asking for is no different, like I said, than what the code would allow homeowners to do once they buy the house. And it's no different than what Richmond American was allowed to do. We don't see that the additional variances are problematic, especially since Richmond has not used, as staff noted, five of its variances. And it may not use all of its outstanding variances even. That being the case, if you grant the eight variances that Lennar is requesting, given that we withdrew one, and you add that to the variances that Richmond either has used or can possibly use at this point, that's only 16 variances in a 78 lot subdivision. It's only four more than Richmond was already granted. So I don't think the planning commission's determination that granting Lennar's variances would be excessive is really valid at this point. I will also say that these variances were not something that Lennar identified as being needed until after it went through the complicated set of calculations it needed to go through to figure out how to cite the appropriate house on any given lot. This is what Mike Anders was alluding to. The variance numbers are small enough that it's just not something you could know upfront. You need to do the, the work first to reach the conclusion that the variances are needed. So that concludes what I have to say. And I would close by asking you respectfully to please approve all of our variance requests. And we are certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Can you tell me how long your company has been in business building houses?
Michael is muted. I think he's the-
Matt, or I can.
Sorry. Counselor Tobias, I don't know the exact date where, we'll look that up as I'm speaking, but we're a publicly traded company, one of the larger companies in the, in the nation as well as the Portland metro area. The most recent community that we've built closest to St. Helens is, was in Scapoose. We built there several years ago. We're currently building about 13 or 15 different communities throughout the Portland metro area, from the tri-county area in Portland to Clark County. And then we're anxious to do some more business in, in your, in your county.
So it's fair to say that you've been in the building business and should have been quite aware of all the building codes, regulations for some years back, not only in Columbia County, but many other parts. So the expression "we didn't know" I don't find is a valid reason for using that, since you've had a huge amount of experience, both in terms of time and number of locations.
My response then?
Yeah.
Oh, so if I may respond to that, again, I'm just going to reiterate that with all the municipalities that we- Oh, so if I may respond to that again, I'm just going to reiterate that with all the municipalities that we work in, all the codes are different. And in addition, codes change every year. There's things that, that happen. And so, again, we do not have the time and energy to spend upfront before we put a property in escrow. And then, we put a property in escrow, that's when we dive into all the details.
So, Michael, I have a question. Doug Morton, you see me on that? All right, and can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Okay, give me a, a general characteristic of your, of your ranch-style design. Are they, is that, would, would that be square footage kind of wise? And would that be one or two bedrooms or just a, a bit of a characteristic and, and price as well?
There are three bedrooms, two baths, and we are with seven, what's the square footage? 15, 1574 and 1659 square feet.
Does that include a garage as well?
Oh, yeah, two-car garage. All of our homes have two-car garage. Yeah. So, price range, we typically don't, we're five months to build, couple of months to get an issue of permit. So, we're six, seven months out and typically we don't, we don't issue prices until we're ready to go to market. I will tell you that our anticipated prices from where, they should be competitive in comparison to what's being building in the community now. I can tell you that.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the, in the general community of St. Helens or the community of your, of Emerald Meadows?
Well, both. I mean, we're, new, new homes have a tough time competing with the resale homes, given the cost of land, given the cost of permits, the cost of construction, et cetera. But in comparison to the other new homes being built within Emerald Meadows, we feel will be very competitive.
Thank you.
Welcome.
You mentioned you don't know the approximate cost of this house and yet you say this is for low-income housing. Your company with all of its experience must have an idea what low-income housing goes for or is projected to go for the next year or five months. We're getting a lot of fog here, gentlemen.
So, for, for clarification, we didn't say low-income homes. We're saying homes of a certain price range. Our, our goal is to bring homes in a price range that we believe is going to be competitive in the marketplace and that a certain number of buyers can achieve. And we believe that, that bringing in some lower square footage homes and some ranch homes can achieve not only a certain price point, but it can appeal to a couple of different demographics, both, both in empty nesters as well as maybe some young families that are, that are looking to get a little lower price point with some smaller square footage and appeal to a couple of different demographics.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. We can move on to any testimony in support of the application.
If you do want to make a public testimony, you can mark it with a yes or a no or you can send a chat to me. I have not received any chats. I do know we have two phone calls. I'm going to unmute. I think this is Wayne Weigant. Wayne, are you there?
I, I am.
Would you like to, would you like to testify?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mike. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Okay. I submitted a letter to Jenny today with the summation of the concerns that I had for the denial and could not totally understand why the planning commission had denied your application. Your application follows pretty much in line with what, with, what Richmond Homes has done a year ago. And you're not varying anything on any setbacks. It will only amount to a little larger footprint on a lot that is a very small variance request. And I'm totally in favor of asking the council to approve your, your application. And I'm here to answer any questions that I can answer. But I've heard the testimony and it was well presented by the attorney. And any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
And for any city councilors who did not get a chance to read it, I have shared my screen. Can everybody see Wayne's letter?
Yes.
Okay, great. And, and while we're on that point of, in letters of support, I did receive an email from an abutting neighbor in support of the application. Her main points where she noted she'd prefer no development, but understands development happens and would prefer to have single-level living next to her as opposed to all two, two-level. So, that was another letter in support, but I'll leave it to council if they have questions for Wayne.
Wayne, you sold these original property to this estate, correct?
I'm sorry, my phone crackled. Did you ask me if I originally owned the property that was subdivided? Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I'm now going ahead and unmuting the phone number that ends in 6444. You are unmuted. Would you like to testify?
No, thank you. We're waiting for the next one. Thank you.
Okay. Jenny, I see no other comments or any indication of any other testimony.
Would anyone like to testify as neutral? Raise your hand or chat with Matt. Not seeing any. Okay, would anyone like to testify in opposition to this proposal? Not seeing any. So, the applicant has the opportunity to rebut. But there was no testimony in opposition. We did receive a letter from Al Peterson. Would any councilors like to see that letter? Did they all get a chance to review it? It was emailed, I believe it was last week.
Could you briefly show that on your screen?
Sure, yeah, it's three pages, so you'll just have to bear with me.
We got it emailed and there was a hard copy.
Yes. Doug, just let me know when you want me to scroll.
Now? 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 Thank you.
Is there any other testimony in opposition? I think we can close the record.
Hey. We will close this public hearing.